Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Now that I am back, all board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wanted to start tonight's meeting by honoring our veterans who are with us tonight. Today, we take time to honor American veterans. On the anniversary of the end of World War I, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, we celebrate American freedom and all of those who have served the United States of America. If you are a veteran or active-duty soldier, please stand and be recognized. Let's give applause anyway, thank you. On behalf of Carmel Clay Schools, we thank all of you in attendance and all veterans and active-duty soldiers here and around the globe for your service to our country. Next on our agenda, we will recognize the Young Artist Award winners, Ms. Rice.
Good evening, I'm Ramona Rice, and thank you to the board and to all of you who are here this evening. We're going to be recognizing our young artists this evening, and we're so excited to do this. We just recognize these artists only twice a year, and each of our schools nominates, recommends, one of their students as the young artist, and then their beautiful artwork gets to hang in our public meeting room for the next six months. So everyone who comes into this room gets to enjoy their artwork. And I will tell you that the week that these are down, we get all kinds of comments on how empty the wall is without the beautiful artwork. So we're so happy to be able to celebrate this honor tonight. So what I'd like to ask you to do, artists, when you come up, you'll get your certificate here, and then we're going to just ask you to wait in the front of the dais, and you'll just go all the way around to the side. And then, well, once we have everybody up here, you'll be able to take your pictures. And don't worry, parents, we'll give you plenty of time to take a picture when they're up in the front. All right. First off, we have a 5th grader from Carmel Elementary, Elena Ellsbury. A 10th grader from Carmel High School, Amy Blacker. 8th grade from Carmel Middle School, Morgan Depoy. 5th grade from Cherry Tree Elementary, Riley McNamara. 1st grade from Clay Center Elementary, Ben Dirk. 7th grader from Clay Middle School, Avni Bhati. 2nd grade from College Wood Elementary, Alice Liao. 6th grade Creekside Middle School, Ben Carlston. 3rd grader Kyle Cummins from Forest Dale Elementary. We actually have three artists from Mohawk, and they did a collaborative piece. It's the hieroglyphics up here. All three 5th graders, Charlie Akri, Ethan Chen, and Henry Schaefer. Also 5th grade from Prairie Trace Elementary, Nidi Vedadi. 5th grade from Smoky Row Elementary, Mira Kukresha. 2nd grade from Town Meadow Elementary, Haruma Sato. 1st grade from West Clay Elementary, Sadia Kamilova. And 3rd grade from Woodbrook Elementary, Von Beer. One more round of applause for our young artists. We'll let Emily get a picture first for our social media, and then we'll let parents take a photo here in just a second.
And also, parents and guest members here. We'd also like to recognize our fabulous art teachers that are here that work with our students each and every day. So if you are one of our art teachers, if you could stand up to be recognized.
And those of you in the audience, we can take a brief break if you would like to go home for this evening. Since it's a school night, you are welcome to stay, but we will take a break for a few minutes. We will now move on to public comment. We do have one person signed up for public comment this evening. Per Board Biolaw 0167.3, speakers will be placed typically in separate groups. Group 1 is people who reside in Carmel, or are Carmel Clay parents, teachers, or students. And then also, the other group would be people who do not live in Carmel. As a reminder, for this specific public comment session, all of comments have to be regarding our workshop session today. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and preface their comments by announcement of their name. Any public comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. The school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments, but will take everything said under advisement. So our person we have up, you will, up on the screen will be, are we going to do the timer? Not the timer, okay. We will just let you know, yeah, just pay attention to the lights on the podium. The lights will alert you to when your time is almost up, and then the red, when your time is up. So we have signed up today Martin Struther.
Good evening, my name is Martin Struther, and I want to thank you for seeking public input on a topic that's incredibly important to the learning and teaching process here in Carmel, and that is equitable grading practices. As a former public school teacher of 19 years, 17 years in the neighboring HSE schools, I was asked to implement grading for equity for the last five years I taught, from 2017 to 2022. In theory, equitable grading has some appealing themes. It challenges teachers to consider bias, and to focus on the mastery of skills and not one-time performances by students. It allows students the freedom to make mistakes and to learn from them, instead of being punished by them. And it can even help students that struggle with test anxiety. However, in practice, I found equitable grading results in some very unappealing consequences. And in the five years that our district encouraged it, I personally never met one parent who agreed that it was in the best interest for their student. Some of the concepts that we were asked to implement in the name of equity included flexible due dates, meaning any work turned in before the end of the quarter had to be graded by the teacher for full credit. Number two, an unlimited amount of retakes on assessments, and the chance to earn up to 100% on those retakes. Number three, a no-zero policy, meaning that if no work was turned in, we were told to insert a 59%, because that was the highest F grade, and then to raise that grade once the assignment was submitted, all the way up to 100%. If no work was ever submitted, we were instructed to leave the 59% in the gradebook, even though 0% was actually submitted by the student. Parents and many teachers were in agreement. These practices had unintended consequences. They encouraged a lack of organization, a lack of preparation, and a lack of strong work ethic. They not only didn't serve students well, but they made us as teachers and have our jobs even be more difficult as students would quickly learn the system and take advantage of it. I understand that each teacher values autonomy and does not want their gradebook to be micromanaged. But I would argue that forcing equitable grading practices does just that. And it also can create inconsistencies between teachers and buildings, as some principals and department heads require it, but others do not. In a February 2024 Fordham Institute Policy Brief, Dr. Adam Tyner and Dr. Meredith Coffey shared their research that equitable grading has caused grade inflation, and it's shown little evidence of greater learning, while also reducing student expectations, accountability, and motivation. It has also made teachers' jobs more difficult. The report states, "The world of education is awash with rhetoric about the importance of holding high expectations for students. What grading reformers have not understood is that high standards, rigorous grading, and student accountability are the incarnation of high expectations." I encourage the board and the Carmel administration to study the effects of these grading practices, to show total transparency to the public in whatever you decide. Let everyone know what professional development is being used and what grading practices are being encouraged. And if there are official policies in place, let the public know what grade levels and what buildings are requiring them. I also encourage teacher and parent input sought through committees, anonymous surveys, or both. But again, thank you for seeking public input on such an important topic.
Thank you for your comments. Next on our agenda is our consent items. Tonight, our consent items include the Personnel Report, Claims, and Payroll. And as a reminder for everybody in the audience, consent is our, part of our agenda that refers to the designated section where we group routine items together so that we can consider them and approve them in one single motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Still moved.
Thank you, Katie, do I have a second? Thank you, Louise, any discussion? We will now take a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is action items. The first action item is the bid award for the Carmel Clay Schools District, this is a mouthful, Whitskin Tennis Complex. I will, I'll get used to saying that. So the Carmel Clay Schools Whitskin Tennis Complex, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you, this is a recommendation to award bids to essentially replace the tennis courts. We've discussed this previously at previous board meetings. We had a total of three bidders, the total amount of the, and we're awarding, recommending award to two bidders. One for the courts themselves, and a second bid for the electrical requirements for the project. So the total amount is $3,981,500. This is well within our budget that we established. There were some alternates included, we chose not to recommend the alternates. It has to do with some fencing that will go around the complex itself. And, but we, we felt that the pricing was excessive, and so we're going to really essentially redesign that fencing, and then we'll seek likely quotes at a later date in time, but we'll have sufficient money to do that.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the bid award for the Carmel Clay Schools Whitskin Tennis Complex? Thank you, Greg, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise, any discussion? Seeing none, we will now take a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the adoption of the changes to Policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to the board with a recommendation to approve the changes in Policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. And as we discussed in our last meeting, there are times when the board is approached to rename some facilities. And as we reviewed that policy, we looked at that policy to determine that we did need to make some changes.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to adopt the changes to Policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities?
Still moved.
Thank you, Jennifer, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie, any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is the workshop topic, Assessing, Grading, and Reporting.
Okay, so this evening, we're going to discuss assessment, grading, and reporting. And this topic is one of the most hotly debated topics in education. It's very much debated, as you can see, lots of different thoughts on the matter. And everyone who has gone to school has been graded at some point in time. And they definitely have some different associations with grading. Some may have felt frustration, or felt that they were wronged by grades, or some may have felt like there was an injustice done to them. And so you might hear comments like, "The grade didn't reflect what I learned," or "The teacher didn't like me and gave me a bad grade," or "It just wasn't fair." So many people have strong opinions about grading based on personal experiences. And because these experiences vary so much, those opinions vary. So it's really important to make sure that as we talk about grading and reporting, and as we look at our practices and our policies, that we are using trustworthy research and what the literature says, and not just base it on people's opinions of what should happen in the grading. And so as we think about the grading practices, we want to make sure that we're looking at the learning. We're focused on the learning, because as we think about what happens in our classrooms each and every day, our whole purpose here is for students to learn. So we want to make sure that we have assessment, grading, and reporting practices that support that student learning. And so, the grading practices has been a journey for Carmel Clay Schools. We actually have been on this journey for a very long time, and we're in the middle of that journey. We have been working with different groups of teachers, administrators, looking at what the research says, studying the research, and implementing different practices based on that research, and then evaluating how that's working, and tweaking those practices as well as we go down the line. So we've looked at many different researchers on grading, to include Guskey, Wormley, Stiggins, O'Connor, many different researchers along the way to look at, what does the research say? So we're not just basing it on the traditions of what was done to us when we were in school, but really looking at what does, what those best practices need to look like. And so, before we look at the assessment piece of this, we want to look for the assessment for learning. So we want to talk about what is that assessment. So when we think about assessment, assessment refers to the wide variety of methods or tools that educators use to evaluate, measure, and document academic readiness, or the learning progression, the skill acquisition, or the educational needs of the student. So this evening, as we are talking about assessment, the methods we're pertaining to are the progression towards the standard or the skills that the students have learned. And our learning is all based on the Indiana Academic Standards. Our curriculum is based on the essential standards of the Indiana Academic Standards. So we are assessing, how are our students progressing towards meeting that specific standard? And as we look at our instructional practices, you can't talk about assessing and grading and reporting without looking at the instructional practices. And as we look at our instructional practices, we base our instructional practices on a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So what do I mean by that guaranteed viable curriculum? So what I mean by that is, the guaranteed aspect of it is that all students that are enrolled in the same class, course, or grade level across the district are exposed to the same rigorous curriculum regardless of the teacher and the school. So students that are enrolled in 6th grade science at Creekside are, have the same rigorous curriculum as students that are enrolled in 6th grade science at Clay Middle School. So we want to make sure that all of our students are guaranteed that same rigorous curriculum. And then, as we think about the viable part, the viable aspect of guaranteed and viable curriculum, it recognizes the difference between teaching the curriculum and covering the curriculum. Teachers can cover a lot of content, but in order to teach the content, the students need to learn. Learning is not optional. You need to make sure, it needs to be a viable that all students have the opportunity to learn, and we are then looking, we're assessing the students on their progress towards the standard. So it's not an option to opt out of the learning. That's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that all of our students are progressing towards meeting those essential Indiana Academic Standards. And so when we look at our assessing, and our grading, and our reporting practices, it is based on that learning. So as we look at assessing that learning, you can see up here, we have three different types of assessment. We have our assessment of learning, our assessment as learning, and our assessment for learning. So when we think about the assessment of learning, the assessment of learning, sometimes you might hear it referred to as summative assessment. This is the assessment that demonstrates the achievement that the student has gained through the learning. This is done after the learning takes place. So this might be at the end of the chapter or unit. This might be a project that they do, a culminating project they do that shows their learning throughout that unit, or throughout the year for the course. So it's after the fact. Then you have two assessments, as learning and assessment for learning. The assessment for learning is assessment that is done typically by the teacher. It's looking at giving feedback to both the teacher and the student on where the student is in progressing towards the learning. So it's, you're getting feedback on both the learning itself, and then also on the instructional practices. So as the teacher looks at, how can they change their learning? How can they tweak the learning in order to make sure, the instruction, in order to make sure the students are still learning? That is happening, it's a formative type of assessment, and it's happening during the learning. The assessment as learning, this is where the students are self-assessing themselves. It's very important for students to have that metacognitive awareness of where they are in the learning, and how are they making sure they are doing the things that they need to do. This assessment is, this might be a student looking at their work and assessing themselves on a rubric to see where do they need to go next, what else do they need to add? This could be where they're doing some peer assessment with each other, or they're, as they're working with a group, or what have you. But it's during the learning, and again, it's to get that feedback on where to go next. And so as we think about the assessment as learning, that's not something that is reported in a gradebook, or that's not necessarily something that's reported in a report card. But when we look at assessment of learning and assessment for learning, the assessment of learning, again, that's the summative, that's after the fact, and the assessment for learning, that's during the learning, those two assessments would be possibly graded, especially the summative would definitely be graded. The assessment of learning could be graded, and that may be recorded in the gradebook. That gives feedback to the students. It gives feedback also to parents, because as parents can get into Power School and see that. But again, the formative assessment may not be in the final grade of the summative assessment, but it is, remember, it's done during the learning, and it's a way to give that feedback. So you have those two that are graded. And then when you get into- And then when you get into the assessment of learning, which again, is the assessment at the end, the culminating activities, that is what's graded and reported on. It's very important to realize, our grades want to reflect what the student has learned. Now, many times in, grades can reflect a variety of things, like what the student learns, the student's work habits. It could be, did the student turn it in on time? Did the student have missing assignments? You want to separate the behavior pieces with the academic achievement part of the grade, because we want to make sure we're accurately reflecting what the students have learned with the grade. We still may want to look at, and we'll talk about some examples that we use in our elementary and next steps for our secondary, where we're still reporting on some of those behavioral pieces, but you're separating them from the grade. The grade needs to reflect the achievement that the student has gained based on the standard. It's not based compared to other students in the classroom. It is the criterion reference, or it's based on where the student is in progressing towards the standard. So that's a very important piece to remember. And some of the issues that people have with the different grading is because they're trying to take one grade and make it mean everything. And when you separate those out, then you help remedy some of those issues that you have with grading. So as we think about the grading, they don't reflect who the student is as the learner, but where that student is at that point in time in their learning journey. It's really important to note that that is always temporary. We all, as we continue to think about that growth mindset as opposed to a fixed mindset, you have, you're continuously growing and learning. And so let's look at some, one of our researchers that we brought in several years ago to Carmel Clay Schools to help us as we started, that we were in our journey, where we had Rick Wormley come and talk to us about grading practices and what that research says, and what he does in that practice. And we have a video here of him talking about those grading practices. And Rick Wormley is one of the first national board-certified teachers. He's an award-winning teacher that primarily, most of his work has been done in the middle school. Rick is a teacher. He is also a researcher. He's also an author. One of his best-known works is Fair is Not Always Equal, where he talks about differentiating learning and what that looks like, and then how do you assess for that learning, and how do you grade and report for that learning? Let's just watch a snippet of Rick Wormley.
Failure. And that always leads to a conversation about redos, retakes, do-overs. And we have to meet that head-on. There's this mindset that I have to be real rigid with this, or teach kids to respect and honor deadlines, and whatever else it might be, to get them ready for that larger world. But that's actually not very constructive in a lot of places. So let's take a look first at failure, and then we'll see how that kind of moves into the discussion about retakes or do-overs. A lot of times, teachers will think that they're doing the right thing by waving from the rim of the pit. We all become these rim wavers. We, the child has dug a pit for himself. He's really dug himself in. He was irresponsible, whatever it was. And we sit there and we go, "So it's cold down there, and there's no way out. It's a little bit lonely. Well, that just stinks. Join us when you can. That'll learn you." And we wag the admonishing finger from afar, as if that will teach. It doesn't. There must be hope. Without hope, you have a much bigger problem than your grading system or different instruction. You have a kid who wants to throw it on the ball and go home. I can't teach if my whole mindset is "gotcha", instead of, "Hey, what do I need to do so you are successful?" So one of the things we can do is we can jump in that pit, and we can say, even though it might not be true, we can act like it and qualify for an Academy Award. "I've been here before. I know the way out. Come with me." That's actually much more constructive. It speaks to Carol Dweck's notion of growth mindset as opposed to fixed intelligence. "I was never good at math. I won't be good at this math. I will never be good at math. I don't have a math gene in my body. Just let me take the test, and let me take my F." That's fixed intelligence. Growth mindset is more, "You know what? I don't know it now. But with enough effort and the resources, I can come to know it, and to the same level as anybody else who knows it well." That's that growth mindset that we want to cultivate in our classrooms. A lot of teachers hide behind that 50/50 notion, like, "The kid has to meet me halfway." No, after 25 years of teaching, it's much more 60/40. And the one kid who sits in the back of the room and never interacts, 90/10. We don't want it to be, "You can get a horse to water, but you can't make it drink." We want it to be, "You can get a horse to water, but you can't make it thirsty." It turns out you can't. As the old joke goes, "Hand out Salt Licks to every single kid." I have to get them to the content and make it so compelling they want to drink from it. I don't leave it to their immaturity. For instance, a kid who says, "I don't care if I get an F. School sucks." Pardon the vernacular there, but that happens a lot, either spoken or at least considered. That kid who says that, that, "I don't care about the F. School's just terrible," should not be left in charge of his learning and thereby his destiny. But a lot of teachers abdicate their responsibility. We're like editors working with writers. One of the great things we do if we're editing somebody else is save the writer from himself. So I'm going to jump in and get face-to-face with that immature, morphing human, and I'm going to say, "No, you're not allowed to give up on yourself. I'm now going to put everything in place so you actually partake in the content, and you learn." I won't let his immaturity or lack of development dictate the level of his rise. So failure is not something to demonize. There's a wonderful saying, a wonderful book out there, "Failure is not an option." NASA scientists use it. Lots of people use it. Business leaders use that phrase. But they do it, and they explain what it really means, which is very, very powerful. But if we use that phrase just by itself, it actually becomes a negative. Failure is not only an option, it is preferred. Exposure to consistent success doesn't teach us as much as exposure to failure. In fact, in the top three all-time best teaching strategies, recovering from a blind alley, a stumble, actually teaches more than just walking normally through it and never falling. We want to make it actually okay to fail, but then to recover from it. And if that means, we do this, it means that zeros are fine, Fs are fine, as long as they're recoverable in full. Now that begs the question, what about retakes and do-overs? Do I count them a lot? Do I not? What's up with that? Well, it turns out, if you look at a lot of the instructional models and research out there, we have to do things over and over again. I know some studies suggest 24 times before we can get to even 80% proficiency. Well, that's important. I get that. That's fine. But how do people become really, really proficient? By doing things over and over again. But our classrooms don't allow for that, because we have this curriculum overload. We have to get through this over and over. But try to imagine, "I've got time to do 24 persuasive essays, 24 labs on ions to teach you about ions." We don't have time to do that. So we think we're teaching them deadlines and responsibility by actually doing something that is not sound instruction. That's not good. So from time to time, as time and resources allow, we need to open ourselves up to redoing things. So think about it, LSATs, MCATs, Praxis Exam for teachers in the United States, Bar Exam for lawyers, CP exams for accountants, driver's license tests, auto mechanic certification exam, pilot's license tests are all allowed to be redone over and over and over again for full credit. High stakes, fully reflective of the larger responsible world kids will one day enter. They're allowed to be done for full credit over and over again? How pompous is it for a classroom teacher to say, "My quiz, this paper, this test, this homework is so indicative of the larger world of responsibility that I'm trying to teach you, and so high stakes, it can't possibly be redone." You don't have a pedagogical leg to stand on. One time, I came up behind one of my students who was trash-talking me. He was very frustrated with me. And his classmates saw me coming up behind him. His eyes got really big, because there's no time to warn his classmate friend that I was coming up, particularly since I was walking up behind him doing this. And I stood behind that student of mine, and I listened to him say this. "Man, Mr. Wormley makes you do it over and over again until you learn it. It sucks." For me, touchdown. I'll grab it. In fact, I find it a bit of a cop-out. It's a weak teacher who doesn't allow redos and do-overs, because you're not teaching to make sure he learns it. You're teaching to make sure he learns it on the conveyor belt. You're 11, you learn this. You're 12, you learn this. You're hiding behind the factory model schooling. If you teach something to kids, and they don't learn it, it's like a zero or a D or an F, and you say there's no chance to recover, you said three things that are unacceptable to a highly-accomplished professional. You said first, "Hey, this assignment had absolutely no educational value. Yet I assigned it to you anyway, but it was totally skippable." That's not cool. You're assigning busy work? You bring shame on the whole profession to do that. If it's worth assigning, it's worth getting done, because it matters. It transforms a student from where he was prior to, if he had not done it at all. Second, you said, "Hey, you didn't do all this work? Nah, just take the zero. You don't have to do it." How does that teach consequence and accountability? The consequence in my class for not doing your work is doing your work. I will haunt your nightmares. And the third one is the most heinous. You've just said, "It's okay if you don't learn this." That's beyond most teachers' pay grade. Only a state, a province, a school board gets to decide what the curriculum is, not the classroom teacher. I need to make sure that I teach in whatever way possible you become successful, not just to say, "Here is the curriculum, and now let me document your deficiencies with it." That's not teaching, and we should live up to the promise of all that teaching can be.
So as we think about that, our grading practices, and really look at how we are focusing on those grading practices, we want to make sure that we grade for the learning, not for the failure. It's not about to see how many Fs you have in your classroom. And some people might say, "Oh, well, a teacher that has really good grades in their class is not, doesn't have a rigorous classroom." Not so. Again, we are assessing all students based on the standard. It's not based on comparing other students to each other. They're comparing to where is their learning towards the standard. And I would say that a teacher that has very good grades in their classrooms, not inflated grades, but grades that truly reflect the achievement based on the standard, is a teacher that has those best practices, those instructional practices in place, that is using that assessment for learning and as learning throughout the learning process so that they can continue to look at their instructional practices, and when a student is not getting it, they can correct in flight and make sure they put those practices in place for that student. And again, when the summative assessment, when we think about a student that does very poorly on a summative assessment, does, is that okay? Are we saying it's okay to fail? No. We want to make sure that the students are learning the curriculum. We want to make sure that the students are learning that. And so we're not allowing the students to opt out, but we're looking at, how are we using that assessment, and how are we putting our grading practices in place? And so let's look at some ways that we are using this. And again, I said, we are on a journey here. We're probably in the middle of our journey. It seems to be a long journey. I know Dr. Ferris will say, "Yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time," and Mrs. Pittman. But we have practices in place, and as I said, we are, we try out different practices. And one of the reasons this journey is taking us so long is because, as I said, grading is very much based on traditions. It's very much based on people's opinions, and to change those traditions to, it's a slow-moving process. So now we will have, we have people from the high school. We have Dr. Tim Ferriss, our high school principal. We have Jacinda Selhowsky, our math department chair. And we have Mr. Justin Quick, our social studies department chair. And they're going to talk to us about what grading and reporting practices look like for learning at the high school.
I'm assuming I have, do I have to use this? Okay, all right. Is, Dr. Dudley said, "This is about the learning." And I will assure you, and many of you know this, I've been at three different levels, elementary, middle, and high. And we have been talking about this, I feel like, my whole career in this district. I also assure you, when we started this conversation, I looked a little different. I had dark hair back then. For us at the high school, one thing that we talk about often at our reassessments, and we have, we have worked with our department chairs and our teachers to look at, how can we best make sure that our students, because it is all about the learning, that the grade represents where they are in that journey? And so for us, that looks many different ways. However, the most important thing is, is that we know that when it gets to the end of the semester, whatever that grade is, we want that grade to reflect the content that they've mastered, the content that they've learned, not about whether they haven't turned something in, or whatever it may be. You know, they've had a bad day, or, you know, that they, you know, knew something at the end, because as Rick Wormley says there, you know, kids learn things at different times. And what does that look like? And we'll share some different examples of that. So for us, when we look at that, we want to make sure our assessments and those things are specifically at that moment of time. And so with that being said, when the student takes the test at the end of the unit, and it's like, the kid nails it, great. If the kid doesn't nail it, we feel a sense of accountability to make sure that that student is going to learn. Now, not every kid wants to engage in that, as he alludes to. But we want to take the responsibility to be able to pull that student along to say, "Look, you may not have it right now, but you might have it in two weeks, or on the next unit test, or, you know, a paper that you're writing, or whatever it may be." And so when we think about that, we know that some students need additional opportunities. It's not about just that one moment of time. We know that they may have it, and then they may not have it. We want them to master it. And as a father of four kids, I talk to my own children about this all the time, whether they receive a poor grade on a test, or it's an assignment, or whatever. It's always trying to have that conversation about like, "Well, what do you need to learn? What do you need to fill in the gap about?" Not about, "Right now. You can get it at a different point, but you do have an accountability. What are you going to do different?" And we'll talk just briefly about that. So as I say, that accountability to learning, we do not allow just a student to say, "I'm going to redo this," or "I'm going to redo that," or, you know, whatever it may be. And because there are people out there that have even said to me, "Well, they're just going to turn it in blank." No, that's not true. That's a whole different conversation of why a student might do that. This is, and I'll kind of use this as an example. You know, if I know, back in my kindergarten teaching days, if I know a student is not able to, you know, read sight words or something, I can't just have them do the same thing over and over again and expect the same result, or expect a different result. I have to do something different. It's like, for example, if I'm trying to put on muscle mass, or weight, or lose weight, I can't keep doing the same things that I'm doing. There has to be something different. And so with that, when a student doesn't perform well in a class, or on an assessment, or an assignment, we would say, "What's going to be different?" You can't just redo it. You can't just retake the test. You can't just come back the next day, because there has to be something different. There has to be an intervention. There has to be a feeding. There has to be something for that to change in that student's knowledge. And sometimes, it's just time. Here, we give several different examples, just to participate in teaching review sessions, complete or unattempted assignments. Sometimes, kids don't do things that they're supposed to do. And we hold them accountable to make sure that they get that in, so that they have some of that information or that knowledge. Create graphic organizers concepts. These are examples that we have given our teachers, and the teachers have given to us as we've worked with them, things that they have found successful in their classrooms before they would offer that retake or that redo of any assignment. So reassessment examples. I don't know, Justin, do you want to, Jacinda, you want to add any here, anything here? You want me to keep going? All right, I'm rolling. Of course, I'm rolling. Okay, so when we think about things, again, a misconception with this is, is that, for example, if a student has, you know, 75% on a test, or 60% on a test, we don't necessarily say you have to give them the whole test again. We want to be able to have that conversation to say, "What is the missing component? And what do I need to reteach? Or what do I need to relearn with an individual student to sit down? Or do they need to come to this study session?" Or do they need to come to this study session? Do they need to come to my SRT session? And so with that, again, it is not the concept that you are going to redo. Think about writing an English composition class. Students do not rewrite the whole paper, you know, when they get ready to turn it in at the end of a quarter or a summative. They are working on that and they might rewrite the opening. They may rewrite the concluding paragraph. They have, may have to go back in and add key details or supporting details for that writing piece. So with that being said, it is not just an automatic, you're going to redo the whole thing. One of my favorite examples, math, math gets picked on a lot. This is a positive math example. One time I was having to deal with a, a situation for a student in, in a university that they were requesting a transcript and I just happened to get in. That's one of the first things I always do if I have a parent concern, you know, any conversation, I get in and I read Power School and kind of study the, the student's grades, their attendance, things like that, so I can have a better picture about each individual I'm talking about. And when I get in there and I'm looking at some different grades, it was specific about one class and the teacher had recently given a, a unit assessment along with, couple weeks prior, there was a quiz or a, it said formative assessment and it was on a quiz. And the teacher made a note that, that the, they had changed the formative, formative grade from two weeks ago because the student now mastered that concept. And it said demonstrated by on the test. And so with that being said, that's, it's the idea that different students are going to be able to demonstrate their learning at different times. We're not asking teachers to go back and change grades in the second semester from first, that is not true. This is about being able to make sure that in a moment of, of a semester, over the course of a time, there are our teachers demonstrating what that looks like in their classroom. When a student can demonstrate it, aha, the light bulb has gone off and they are able to now demonstrate mastery in that specific concept. Again, just some exam, I'm not going to read this all to you, you have it, you know, but again, being able to embed specific skills on a student's future test to make sure they, they have that opportunity to demonstrate that. They may not have it and at some point we move on. It just, you know, they don't have it at that point of time for that. So this is not throughout the year, it's not end of the years, you know, there is a deadline to this. And, and with it, we allow our teachers to be able to determine those types of things. So again, this has already been mentioned in the video. There are lots of examples of that. I mean, I can assure you, come to Carmel High School, hang out in the comments with me and a student will tell you how many times they've taken the SAT. And they don't just retake it to retake it. Okay? Again, it goes back to what I said earlier. They're doing something in between, whether they're getting more instruction, whether they're studying more, they're going to study sessions, they may have a tutor, who knows? But they retake it. So in between, they are doing something different. And that is the important piece of this. It is about the learning. They have to get that learning so that they can move forward. All right. So a slogan, a statement that we say at Carmel High School often is, we believe that new learning replaces old, old learning. And I already have given many examples of that. The example I gave about math is a perfect example of that. We believe that when a student demonstrates that new learning, when they have that, that when it's appropriate, it can replace, you know, the grade or it can replace. And the most important thing that we can do for our students and that we can instill in them is that when they graduate from Carmel High School, they don't take away the A in math or whatever it may be, they are taking away that knowledge, that learning that they have so they can go to wherever they, they are going, whether it's a trade, a job, whether they're going to a four-year college or university, but they are able to take that knowledge and apply it so they can move forward to go on to bigger and better things than Carmel High School. I think Carmel High School is sometimes the biggest thing and the greatest thing, but we know the kids are going on to wonderful things outside of our community. Again, Justin, Jacinda, you're welcome to add to that if I'm... Good? I guess I did all right. Amy? Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. And as you know, we'll have time for questions too, so we can also hear Jacinda and Justin's thoughts on that, on when questions come up. But now let's move into our grading as far as, we want to make sure it's all about the learning and we want to make sure that it is mathematically accurate with the grades. We want to make sure that what we have on that grade is about the student's achievement towards the standards and that it is accurately reflecting that with the grade. So we have Mrs. Deanna Pittman from Carmel Middle School, the principal at Carmel Middle School, and Mrs. Kristen Taylor, our math department chair at Carmel Middle School to talk about the mathematically accurate grading and reporting.
Good evening. I've taught here for a long time, been here longer than I think Tim, right? And it's been exciting to be able to see the changes that we have put in place, not only as a former teacher, but then as an administrator here in the district. When students start at the middle school, they go from receiving feedback from a standards-based report card that's based on a scale of zero to four, to now getting feedback from, from grades. And so our goal at the secondary level is to ensure that grades are mathematically correct, easy to understand and describe a student's level of academic performance. So grades at the secondary level only communicate progress and/or mastery of the standards being taught in each of those courses. We do not, however, assess on skills for success, like the elementary, you'll talk about here in just a little bit with the elementary. So many, if not all of us in this room, were graded in school based upon a 100-point scale. However, there's a flaw in this past grading practice. And so we have implemented a new grading practice to address this issue. This grading practice is where we now replace zeros with a 50%. And so I'm going to hand it over to my math department chair so she can be mathy with you. She likes to nerd out on this. So I'm going to hand it over to her so she can explain this to you.
Thank you. This is the interactive portion of the presentation, so you don't get to just sit there this time. So if you look at this scale up here and we grade students on a four-point scale, so if we were to, four being an A, three being a B, and so on, how many points would you award a student who fails to turn in any work? That's the interactive part. Okay. Okay. Just checking. Okay, so then we move to 100-point scale and I ask you the same question. You know, we have 90 is an A, 80 the B, and so on. Same question, how many points would you award a student who fails to turn in any work? Zero again, right? So I just want to double check. So on the top one, four-point scale, we're saying zero. 100-point scale, we're saying zero. Okay? So however, this is where the flaw is. If we are logically consistent in our grading and we look at this, our response would actually have to be a minus six. Okay? So that's the penalty then for failing to turn in your work. Assigning a minus six for missing work is irrational. However, that's essentially what many educators are doing when they assign a zero out of this 100-point scale. So assigning zeros on the 100-point scale disproportionately penalizes the student and then they dig this hole like Wormley was talking about that they can't get out of and they lose their motivation. So I have more math for you. So let's take a look at just the scenario on the left. So we have the zero to 100-point scale here and students receive, they had two assignments that, it says NHI, that's Arling Gopher not handed in. They got a zero out of 100 on those two assignments they didn't turn in. So I want you to take a second here and just average together in the blue table what their grade would be if we were to give them zeros. Do you have it? So hopefully you came up with 52%. Okay? So now let's calculate on the right-hand side here where zero to 100-point scale, but we're going to give them a 50% for missing work. I can see it written all over your face as you already got 72% for this one. Perfect. So I asked, what is the incentive for a student to keep trying if they know that they're going to fail even if they turn in the next assignments and do very well on them, they're still going to fail? And so why would they even try? It doesn't accurately reflect their ability in here. That being said, and it was talked about earlier as well, we do, Wormley said it best, you know, we work really hard to hold kids accountable for when they do have these missing assignments, that whether that be in Core Plus or small groups, they don't get it just the 50% and ride off into the sunset with that. And Mrs. Pittman will talk about that here a little bit, but... So just a comparison here with the traditional scale here and then what we've adopted, basically having 50% as the floor. You can still, each, each of them both has an F. But by putting the floor at a 50%, the categories are rationally distributed. So you have what would be equivalent to a zero, one, two, three, four.
So as studies show, zeros do not motivate our students to learn. And just like Wormley said, you know, what do you do for students that just aren't turning in homework? Well, we hold them accountable. So we also work with them to approve upon those skills for success that they might be struggling with. We start by emphasizing the importance of completing those daily homework assignments, those formative assessments, making sure they understand the relevancy and that that practice each day will only help them when they get to that summative assessment. We often talk to kids about, you know, the practice before the big game or the practice before a concert, you know? They have to do that daily practice to get better, to hear, get that feedback from the teachers, to understand like, okay, what am I doing well? What do I need to work on? And we really point out that that daily, those daily formative assessments are important. So they have to complete those to be ready, right? And we have to do a good job of making sure those daily formative assessments are meaningful. Is that homework meaningful for them? Otherwise, you know, middle school or even at the high school may, may not want to do that. So as students transition into the middle school, they go through many changes, not only physically, but emotionally. If you've had a middle school student or have one now, you understand the changes that they go through. Their social lives tend to become more important and then sometimes these physical and emotional changes really impact their focus at school. We're very fortunate at the middle school level that we have grade level teams. And so our grade level teams meet together two to three times a week and we problem solve students. Admin, student services come and meet with them every other week, but they meet two to three times a week and they really hone in on what the root of the problem of a student who's not turning homework in. So they're not letting them just go and get that 50%. They're trying to figure out why. There's usually a reason why. So some of those lagging skills might be in organization, time management, perseverance, the environment, what's distractions that they're interfering, that are interfering with them and their learning. So teams get together and they may, for example, you may have a student that has multiple missing assignments in Mrs. Taylor's math class. Well, come to find out, you know, as they dig in, the student is just really struggling and giving up. So in Core Plus, which is the, similar to the SRT at the high school, Mrs. Taylor can call that student into her classroom and do reteaching and really hone in on that and let that student turn those assignments in to get, to get credit. You might have a team where they have a student that has multiple assignments missing in multiple classes. And so they dig in, they find out, gosh, this student doesn't know how to organize their binder, right? They've come from the elementary where they're in one classroom mainly for the most of the day, to having four different classrooms just in a day, but eight teachers over two days. It's a lot for them to, to learn and understand that. And so we work really hard to help a student with organization of a binder, organization of a locker. I just walked in the other day, one of my teachers, and they had a student in Core Plus and they had a binder out and they were organizing everything and they'd just been at the locker, just to make sure. And they found a lot of missing assignments in there that were completed. Kid just didn't turn them in. So they're trying to work really hard, our teachers with students, to find out what that root of that problem is. We're very fortunate that we have that time in Core Plus every other day, so we appreciate that because that gives us the opportunity to work with kids so closely. And like Dr. Dudley say, we're in the middle of this journey. We're continuing to have conversations about the grading scale. We would love to look at a zero through four scale like the elementary does or just an A through F without that 100-point scale that's so disproportionate. We'd also like to be able to, you know, look at communicating how students do on skills for success as well. Thank you.
Okay. And so now we, at the elementary, we do have a slightly different way we report our grades through our standards-based grading. So we have Mrs. Kim Piper, the principal at Prairie Trace Elementary School, and Mrs. Rachel Nettle-Thompson, one of our teachers, one of our fifth-grade teachers at Prairie Trace, to talk about the grading practices, what that looks like at the elementary school.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. The elementary world does look a little different, like everyone says and can understand. As you can see, what we have up here right now is a lot of different ways that we communicate progress to our parents in the elementary world. This is a fifth-grade example, but it is similar throughout all the other grade levels because we know that because we don't have our report cards like the middle and high school do each nine weeks, that we need to report out differently to our parents in many different ways. So if you look at this, our parents get communicated with quite frequently. When we start the beginning of the year, we're taking NWA and that is communicated, those reports are communicated to parents throughout the year, each time the students take it. We also communicate out from our special areas teachers. They give out information as to what's happening in all the related arts, so parents know what's happening in those classes. Most importantly, which we just finished with, in November, we have parent-teacher conferences, which is extremely important for our teachers and for our parents to have a special one-on-one time with our teachers to get information as to how students are doing at that moment in time across the board. And many times we, we separate Prairie Trace and many of the schools do, our time into what are obviously our students' strengths, where are areas to grow, and then what questions do parents have for us as to, as to how their children are doing. A lot of times we'll have exemplars there so parents can see where our students are in comparison to where they should be at that time, which is very nice for parents to see and some takeaways they can have for things to do at home during that time too, just as we're progressing towards the standards. Throughout the year in different grade levels, our students may be taking different assessments. In this example here with fifth grade, our students will be taking COGAT, which is in a different assessment, so that information will be sent out to parents. And then you'll see in February, our first standards-based benchmark report goes out and we'll explain what that entails. Because we do parent-teacher conferences in November, to us, that's very important to have that one-on-one time. And we also take that time to explain what that benchmark report card is going to look like to parents when they get it. And then at the end of the year, they'll get a standards-based score report, which shows our students proficiency towards those essential standards. So you'll see that as we talk through that a little bit here, but we just wanted to give the layout there because it is very different as students are progressing towards the standards. Ms. Pittman kind of alluded to that with the different scales we use and things like that as we're giving information to parents.
Hi. So this is an example, pardon my voice, of what our standards-based report cards look like when they go out to parents. So you can see that at the very top of every report card that goes out, the parents are given the information on how the student will be marked in that reporting period. There are two different score systems. There is a benchmark score and then there is a proficiency score that comes in the third reporting period. So the first reporting period, like Mrs. Piper said... So the first reporting period, like Mrs. Piper said, we do not have a report card that goes out. We have our parent-teacher conferences in November where we get to meet one-on-one with those parents and have those conversations in person about student strengths and weaknesses. Then our first standard-based report card actually goes home in February and that is where they are rated on a benchmark scale. And then the final standards-based report card goes home in May at the very end of the school year and that is where they get a proficiency score. And these are for each individual essential standard that we are grading.
So here are some examples of the scoring mechanism that we use at each of the different reporting periods. So the first one where it says reporting period two, that is the one that is sent home in February. And students will be, based on the essential standards, as Rachel just suggested, they'll be given a score on meeting benchmark, approaching benchmark, not meeting benchmark, or not yet assessed. So that is where we see students are right now in February and how they're progressing towards the proficiency towards that standard. So it's, and usually what's awesome about the elementary world is we are completely intervening all the time. So as we've heard about formative and summative assessments tonight, our formative assessments are constantly helping us with those small groups. Our teachers do an incredible job keeping track of the essential standards and where students are moving and progressing based on the small group intervention. I'm also a parent of three kids in our system, two in the elementary world. And anytime they get an assessment back where they're bringing it home to me, they'll tell me, oh, I got this on this math assessment and I met in small group and now I understand it because of this time and the intervention I had, they might not use the word intervention, but I know it's intervention, with their teacher and what they learned. So we know that that is right happening, you know, in the moment with our students as they're getting that information back. The right side here is what our students get at the end of the year, what our parents get at the end of the year. And this is based on proficiency of that essential standard. So where they should be at the end of the year, this is also should coincide with where they are, especially if they're in an I-Learn school, grading levels, so third, fourth, and fifth, and how they are with regard to those essential standards and if they've mastered them or not at the end. So those students will get above proficiency. So if they have the standard and now they're excelling and going above and beyond in that area, at proficiency, we've mastered that standard. Approaching, we still might have needed some reteaching and we may not have it fully yet, but we're getting there. And below proficiency where we're still struggling a little bit and we know we need to continue working on that area. As a parent, when you see that report card come out, the standards-based report card, the actual standard is fully written there. So parents are given that in that language as to where they are based on that individual essential standard in the different subject areas.
And finally, in addition to all of our academic standards that are on our standards-based report cards, we also report out on a couple of different behavior and work habit standards. And we do that using our Skills for Success, which are universal across all of the Carmel Clay schools now. So these four skills that we have pulled out represent a lot of what we see in the classroom day in and day out that is not necessarily communicated through an academic standard. And the four standards that we use here are connection, which is how they're contributing to the classroom community, regulation, which is their ability to follow rules and procedures, perseverance, which is a lot about focus and how much they can attend to a task, and then finally initiative, which is how prepared and organized they are for their day.
So as you can see, we, as we talked about, we're on that journey for grading and we continue to get better. Our standards-based report card, the last, I think it was the last, this is our third year using the new one? Second or third year, this is our second or third year using the new standards, second year. Because we've had standards-based report cards for years and years in the elementary. And then we did, as we looked at what are those best practices, we did a whole revamping of that. And as you can see, we have a four-point scale on those standards-based report cards. It makes it very understandable to the parents. And as they suggested, this whole standard is written on the report card. And we also have cheat sheets of, in parent language, of what that standard means for all of the grade levels of the parents in case they're not understanding the educational terms that might be used. Sometimes there's lingo in those standards. And so we have very specific information for parents so they can better understand that standard and the teachers have the opportunity to share that with all of our parents as well. So as you can see, in the elementary, we do separate, we have progress towards the standard as one score and then their behavior pieces, their work habits, that is a different score. And that's what they would say the best practices. One grade cannot do all of it. And so as we think about continuing this journey, looking at how can we develop some systems in place at the secondary level to report non-academic aspects of student performance? And some people might say, well, that's going to be so much more work for the teachers. Not necessarily so, because right now our teachers in their grade books, they're collecting that information already. They're collecting when the assignment's not handed in. They're collecting when the assignment is late. They're collecting that information already. And how can we then accurately report that on some type of a reporting form at the secondary? So that's one area we can look at. Another one is, as we talked about, how can we make sure that they're easily understandable? Our Carmel Middle School shared how that grading scale is really, it's not based on 100-point scale. 50 is the lowest you can get. It's still a four-point scale where you have 50 as the lowest. But how do we make that more understandable? Because that's not, and a lot of people say you get 50 for doing nothing. Well, right now that's the scale. So how do we develop a scale that has four to seven categories? And some people might say, well, I need to use those percentages because there's, it really gets a more accurate point of what that grade looks like. But as you look at the research and you really delve into the research, you actually have more inconsistent grades when you're using 100-point scale than you are when you're using a scale that has four to seven measures. Because when you take two teachers and they're looking at the same piece of work and you have one that's an 89 and one that's a 90, you cannot differentiate between that. But teachers can accurately, consistently differentiate between A work and B work. And so when we say, oh, it makes it so much more precise when we use 100-point scale, that is actually contrary to what the research would tell you when they look at that consistency. And then the other piece is to continue to work on that consistency in grading, to make sure that regardless of what class you're in at the high school or at the middle school, that the grading is very consistent and it doesn't, it's not a different game to play based on the teacher. So looking at the, what the grades will reflect, continuing that conversation, the purpose of that grading, and then sharing that with our parents and our stakeholders on that. So with that, and I also invite all of my friends up here too, to answer any questions because I have a feeling you might have some.
Thank you for that. I'm a recent convert to believing in this as I've seen it recently in our own house with the way the new child in my home learns. And I've seen that watching him struggle with something and not do well on it. And you can see that maybe half the test he did well and the other half he just missed that concept. And there's also a lot of test-taking anxiety. And so relearning it, being able to go into school and having someone address that specific issue and taking it makes him want to learn. And, you know, I see it in my own employees where if someone doesn't do something correctly, I certainly don't just fire them. It's my job as their boss to mentor them and make sure the next time they do better. So, and I always tell them, even if you don't stay in my employ, I want to make sure you're better as you go forward into the workforce. And so I think that it's best practices. I spent a lot of time today reading over some of these researchers. Benjamin Bloom, who talks about mastery of learning, and Guskey, and watching some podcasts on this. And while there may be other researchers with contradictory information, everything they said made sense because as you pointed out this evening, our job is to make sure the children learn the information. And that is what should be reflected. And just teaching it and they not learn it is not what we're here for. So thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Yeah, I wish we could sit at a table with coffee because I have very, like, so many thoughts and so many questions and I'm just like, I don't know that I'll have time to get through them all. I do appreciate the presentation. I do appreciate the video and the perspective, the very spirited perspective. I've lived through two children in Carmel schools. The first one didn't have, I guess what people term it as, grading for equity. And the second one did in middle school. And how I got exposed to it was not my preference. So I am a parent that looks at grades consistently and so my husband does as well. And so when I saw 50%, I'm like, oh, son, you didn't do the best that you could, kind of thing. And it ended up being him not turning in things. So then I was frustrated because I could not very easily tell as a parent when my son was engaging and trying and when he wasn't. So I'll give you that context. So some of the questions I have are, what, if you recall, great, if you don't, it's fine. You can send an email later. What was maybe like the starting benchmark for the data in this, in this school district that we used to say that we needed to shift or change? Was there a benchmark or was it like norms that we see happening across educational systems?
So first let me address, so the, your point to the 50%, absolutely. How do we make that more accurate? How do we make that more understandable to the parents? And that's why we talked about, we need to think about a different type of a scale. So I'll address that because it's, it is confusing. I understand what you're saying. So as we started this learning, this grading learning, one of the pieces, as we think about, we're always about continuous improvement. We're always about making sure that we're looking at the research and we're looking at what are those best practices and then comparing them to our own practices and continuing to get better. So as we think about, are we, do we have practices in place that's about the learning? And we always start with the curriculum. We look at the curriculum, we look at those instructional practices. And then we move into the grading piece. And our grading journey has come, it's never-ending, but it has been a very slow journey because of the very strongly held beliefs of people that have about grading. With our teachers that have very strong beliefs, it looks very personable to them. And so we continue to look at, how can we make sure the grade, the grading and the reporting is moving towards learning and not just towards, this is what the failure is. So we actually started this journey when I was at Orchard Park as a principal with grading assessment for learning. And it was the work of Rick Siggens, Ken O'Connor. And we started that as a district-wide study on looking at, how can we make sure that we don't only have assessment of learning, but we have assessment for learning? And that piece, so that's probably started back in 2007. And we wanted to make sure that the practices that we were doing were aligned with what's best practice for learning. So that's how that, this started. It was really about looking at what our practices are and are they in alignment for the learning? And some of the things that we talked about here even tonight is, you know, people say, oh, grades are motivating. Well, success can be motivating, absolutely. But failure is not motivating. So if all you do is fail and fail and fail, you're not going to get any better. You're not going to be motivated to get better. And then also, as Rick warmly talked about, you can tell he's a middle school teacher primarily, the way he talked about it. But you can't just let the immaturity of the student to say, look, I taught it. It was their job to learn it and they didn't learn it. No. Again, if you want to have that guaranteed viable curriculum and it's not just covering the content, it's making sure the students are learning. I can do a great lesson plan and a fabulous lesson on teaching my dog to whistle. But my dog's not going to learn to whistle. So did I really teach him to whistle? No. So you have to make sure it's the teaching, it's about the learning piece. And so that's what started that.
Okay, cool. So then, it sounds like we don't necessarily have a quantitative data point as a benchmark, right? Like a starting benchmark. So then, one of the reasons for me asking the question is, how do we find out? And anybody can answer it. How do we find out if this shift actually has helped our students versus harmed them?
Does anyone want to? I can, you want to? You have to come up here too.
And this is probably what, like, middle school? Because we don't really give 50% at the high school level, right? Right, it's middle school.
No, yeah. Well, and I would just say this, I mean, for us, there is not just one quantitative, you know, measure to say this is helping or it's not. But we do look at continued, different data points. You know, whether it's number of kids scoring a three or higher on AP scores, you know, because that, to me, when I think of that, it, again, they're not doing that without having the knowledge in these classrooms and having the opportunity to retake or relearn or, you know, have that learning throughout. And so it's not just one data point for us. It's looking at the number of kids that are requesting those courses. How are they doing in those courses? Looking at our SAT scores. How many kids are at proficiency? And so I do believe those things are helping. But to have one data point to say this is working or it's not, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, so I think one of the motivators for me kind of asking this is, I'm thinking about like my son, right? I'm a parent that tries to learn what are the motivators to help, you know, shift behavior. So I'm like, okay, a benchmark of the number of students that had a C or below before we implemented this were this. But then when we implemented it and we looked at it, you know, three, five years later, the number of students with grading for equity was, grading for equity who was, you know, C and below were less. And we surveyed students to see why they were motivated, that kind of thing. Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to assess my son and who was getting 50%. And it didn't look like he made any additional effort to go back and learn that. When I compare his behavior when he had nothing there and it was just obvious, wait, you didn't turn that in. Or, you know, a 20%, wait, you really did not study for that test kind of thing. It feels very, in this moment, subjective. And so that's why I was trying to get to like maybe some black and white to help me. Maybe you have some thoughts or whatever.
And I would, one thing I would add to that is, we at the high school, we look at, and actually it's going to be on our agenda coming up here in a department chair and leadership team meeting, we look at grade distribution. And again, we're not saying you need to have this number of As or this number of Bs, but it is a data point. That is the one common thing that we have at Carmel High School with over 330 teachers, that they all give grades. And for us to be able to look at how our students are doing, how they're performing, and believe me, I can assure you, we have students in all five categories. You know, we do not, it's not like this is eliminated Fs. We still have Fs. And so what are we doing to help those? And it's just a checkpoint for us to continuing, you know, continue to look at how our students are doing. And for all of our courses, that is a data point that we can look at for all math teachers, all social studies teachers and have those rich conversations, you know, about what are you guys doing? How are you doing that to be able to make sure that our, our students are getting that knowledge? So then again, looking at other data points, SAT, AP scores and how they're doing.
When we first started working with our department chairs to decide to kind of go towards some of these changes with the grading practices, I had a couple of department chairs that were like, no way, nope, not doing it, right? They were not sold on it until we really dug deep and quickly changed their mind. Mrs. Taylor was one of those people, especially with the 50%. So early on when we started this process, we did start to pull the, you know, where we were in regards to grades and then where, as it's progressed. We haven't pulled it lately because we've been in it for a little bit. I think more of it's probably anecdotal, just from our teachers and what they're seeing from students in the classroom. We still had Ds and Fs, right? But I think we did have fewer because kids didn't get stuck in that hole, right? They, so that was more motivating for them to be able to do the work. I think also our teachers are working really hard to make meaningful homework assignments like I talked about earlier and making it relevant so that it does pertain to what they're going to be doing there at the end and show what they're learning. So I think that our teachers would say that they're seeing progress, they're seeing, it's not perfect by any means. But they're seeing progress in that students, you know, gosh, I, I've had a bad day, right? I mean, kids have bad days, we all have bad days, and I am not ready for this test. But they don't feel like, gosh, I can't do anything about it and then just give up.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we have students that certainly will, um, want to do their very, very best on the first time. And then you're going to have students that are like, eh, anyway, I didn't study that well that time, but I want, I know I have that opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that's getting better. They see the importance of doing well the first time because they also know that they have to have a reteaching experience. They have to do something to make sure that they understand that material before they can do that reassessment.
Right. So, because, because I am a fan of the reassessment, like those maybe five bullets that you showed for the, at the high school level that we are deploying to help students rebound. I think in, where my mind is getting stuck is, how are we truly making sure that student has, um, achieved that competency? Right? Because for me, the gap really starts to show when you have those subjects that are, because I don't know the actual, um, education term, you can tell me what it is, that stack learning that has to happen, right? You, you have these foundational principles that get applied to the next test and the next test and the next test. And I think about those gaps where they got a fifty percent, but now they're going to go into these other areas and they did not, they were not, um, I don't know what, how I want to say it. They did not get that competency to actually be able to improve in their next test, because they're not made to do that when they get the fifty percent.
So math is one of those subjects, someone let her talk about that.
Okay.
Math is one of those that just builds upon itself all the time. And if you don't get this, you're not going to get this.
Yeah.
Um, as somebody who is in their twenty-first year in this district teaching math, um, we've seen a lot of things come and go. Um, and one thing I've seen as a teacher and felt, um, since we've done this, is the empowerment I have now with students. Um, before it was like, oh, you didn't turn it in, sorry about you.
Right.
Yeah, oh, you got an F, do better next time. And that kept building with kids. You would see them, you know, they're failing it. And so I knew on the next test, they're going to fail the next one. You know, and as a teacher, you just kept going with it. And it was like, well, you know, they, you just felt, as a teacher, you felt as a failure. You know, because what are you going to do? And now I feel so much empowerment to, hey, you know what? And it was, you know, exactly like Ms. Williams was saying, you know, that when you got this part perfect, I can sit down with a kid and say, look how well you did here. Like, you did great here. But we need to work on this concept here because I know you're going to need it here. And so that is taking place now. And that was not taking place before necessarily, as intentionally as it is now. Um, because we know it has to and we know that we can do that.
Yeah.
You know, whereas before retakes were very taboo.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I can, I can see that. I can see how it can help the student that just made a mistake, right? It's the ones that are not changing their habits that I get concerned about, right? Um, Dr. Ferris, maybe you could speak to this. So how do we ensure, um, consistencies or consistency in approach at the high school level, um, amongst each teacher in, you know, those five different tactics, right? So it could be like under a particular department. How do we not have one teacher that wants to allow retakes, but the other teacher won't allow retakes, that kind of thing?
And, and before, um, Dr. Ferris addresses that, I just want to give another example of kind of the, as we think about it, this is an elementary example, uh, because we, we didn't really talk about retakes in the elementary. But it's not just about the end assessment and the relearning, but it's about how, what do our instructional practices look like? And that assessment for learning. So one area that we're looking at in our kindergarten through third grade, we have our foundations, which last year we did a workshop on foundations, on those foundational literacy pieces. That whole program is set up on, if the students do not score at least eighty percent, then they retake, um, the assessment. But as we're going through the instruction, we're looking at, what are those instructional practices that we're putting in place to make sure they don't get to that end? They get to the end and we know they're going to be successful because we are helping them throughout the learning, throughout the unit, correcting in flight. And so there's no surprises. They know exactly, in all of our assessments, as we continue our work with, um, FTEM, as we look at that clarity in learning and we look at the learning intentions and the success criteria, the assessments are based on the success criteria. The kids know exactly how they're going to be assessed. It's, there's not a mismatch by what's taught and what's assessed. And so there's no surprises at the end. And we're really looking at, how are we making sure we're checking for understanding throughout so that they don't get to the end and not do well on that piece?
So as principal, I, that is one of the greatest challenges, again, as three hundred and thirty, you know, teachers. However, it is also, I believe, my responsibility to kind of create guidelines. Um, and we talked about, um, over the last two years about having some tight and loose guidelines. And so that's where our departments come into play, that we have provided teacher autonomy within their PLCs, um, to be able to create some of those. So if you were to ask me, is every department the same? Absolutely not. It is not. I know that. But we also work within our departments for them to be able to have that autonomy to make what they believe is the best decision within that PLC group.
Yeah, but Dr. Ferris, okay, no, you know, I love you, Dr. Ferris. How is that okay for the student, right? Let's say Jennifer's have, I'm making up names, right? Jennifer's in, uh, teacher, Ms. Stunt's class, and she gets the opportunity to retake her language arts test, you know? And then I'm in Mrs. Browning's class, and Mrs. Browning has decided, well, no, I'm not going to do re- retakes here, but I'll give you, you know, ten percent extra if you retake. Like, how is that equitable for students, though?
Because what you just described would be a PLC, and that would be one of our tides, that that PLC has to be on the same common ground.
PLC?
Uh, professional learning community. So.
Okay. Okay, the subject. Okay. Okay, so, so the consistency is by department. There is a.
Now, by department within course taught, the PLC.
Okay, the course, the course. All teachers, okay. Okay, okay. The subject itself. Okay, that's better than, than I think. Um, I think, you know, maybe, um, I'll, I'll stay in school and learn more about this switch to the four to seven categories, um, you were talking about, Doc, um, Dr. Dudley. Because I, my mind immediately goes to, how does this correlate? Once you need your transcript at the middle school level and you want to go to a different school or you need it for a program to participate, like, how does that even happen?
Right. So when we talk about the four to seven categories, it could be, we, we keep the grades and it's A through F. But it's not based on a hundred point scale. Hundred point scales, i- in the research, it'll tell you, it is not an effective way to accurately, um, assess the grade. And most universities do not use a hundred point scale. They actually use an A through F scale. They're, they're not saying you, you have ninety-nine percent, you have an A. Whether you have ninety percent or ninety-nine percent or what have you, this is A work. And so you're looking at what that looks like. So it's, we're not saying we're not go, we're going to do a proficiency or above proficiency. Uh, we could do that. The, I mean, but that's not what we're necessarily saying there because we do know that those grades, as you look at those transcripts, you look at what that looks like when our students move on to other opportunities, um, that, that's what those grades are. But we want to make sure that when we say this is A work, this is students that have gained mastery in that area and they truly understand, they have a deep understanding of the standards. And not an A because they turned everything in on time and because they might have done some extra credit projects. Um, those pieces, it, that's, that's where you get grade inflation. And one of the pieces that we worked hard at is that extra credit piece, where we removed the extra credit. Um, and hopefully we don't have that happening, um, anymore. We used to get, give points when you brought in a box of tissues. Um, that has nothing to do with the grade. And so we want to make sure the grades accurately reflect what the students, um, are learning.
I appreciate, and I appreciate us, like, kind of challenging ourselves to think about learning differently and grading differently. And I, I'm not opposed to that. Um, I am an adjunct professor and you're right, we give the letter grade, we don't give the percentage. Um, and so, yeah, I'm just trying to see this through the, the eyes of parents and students. So thank you for allowing me to a- ask my questions and answering. So I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask.
First of all, thank you so much for preparing. Um, we plan our workshops over a year in advance, and so we've been very excited about this one. I feel like I'm currently living and breathing this, um, just because I have a junior at Carmel High School and I have an eighth grader at Clay Middle School. Um, and then, so I'm, definitely have perspectives as a parent, which, um, I'm excited to talk about. First of all, I love that I wrote down that grades should reflect what students have learned. Um, you talked a little bit about how traditionally, and I'm going to throw in a big word, um, it sounds dramatic, but the trauma of grades. I know that when I would, you know, get a, whatever it was, and I had worked extremely hard and I knew I could better, but then I was stuck with it. There was nothing I could do, it was on my permanent record forever. And as an eighth grader, you feel like it's forever. You feel like that grade is going to sit with you a long time. Um, and so I love the opportunity to be able to have continual growth. I also love that we have to learn, and I'll change it to teach, our students how to learn. Learning how to learn is not obvious. Um, and so I love the fact that we have to teach that and that we are teaching that. Um, I like that it requires teachers to know their students, and then it also has students have to advocate for themselves. I see through my own students when they need to redo an assignment or to retake something. They've got to do something. They have to go during SRT meet with that teacher. They have to go and talk to that teacher at their desk and say, hey, I would like to redo this or I want to do this, or the teacher's coming to them. So that FaceTime with the teachers, I think, is so important and it's scary. You know, I'm this person who's almost forty and still doesn't like to call people, you know? And to have, to teach your children to have to go up to a teacher who you're, you know, maybe that's not comfortable for you and to have those conversations, I think that's an amazing life skill that we're teaching these kids to advocate for themselves. And then on the flip side, as parents, you know, I get, to my children's dismay, the ding on Power School, the minute a grade is entered and a text, uh, you know, at lunch from my student, I'm really sorry, da-da-da-da-da, like, da-da. It's like, and it's so funny because she got the same ding. And so it's really that transparency of what's going on, um, at school. I can see that. I also loved, um, at back to school night at middle school, they explained the grading process. They went through what it means, how it works. Um, at the high school, a lot of teachers sent home, like, um, rubrics, syllabuses, you would call, you know, of what the year is. And as a parent, I had to sign those. I, my child had to sign those of here's the expectations. Um, and so I felt like I was very well aware. I think that as a district, we've grown better at that. We've gotten better at teaching our parents what we also teach our students. So I think that that's fantastic. Um, I love that you, the kind of the charts that you showed of the zero to one hundred. And I kind of did it where I was like, for that, you'd really need an A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J grade in order to represent all the different points on that scale. Um, and how it is disproportionate because it should really be like an E, that's fifty percent, not an F. And, you know, that, that's the length of my math. So I'm very proud of that. Um, so I think that it's great. I like the fact that you openly acknowledge that you're continually improving. So you and yourself have that growth mindset of, we're going to look at this, we're going to see if it works, we're going to see if it doesn't work. How can we change it? And that things are fluctuating. Um, I don't want my students, my students, my kids, um, or those in the district to ever feel like, you know, there's not opportunities to grow and change. And I'm very thankful as a school board member and as a parent that does this, that the district has that same mindset of, we're going to try something, we're going to work on it, we're going to, you know, evidence-based research, we're not just coming out thin air, and then we're going to adapt and change it if we need to. So I really appreciate learning that you guys are willing to say, hey, this is what the evidence says. We're going to try it and we're going to evaluate. And if it doesn't work, well, we're going to kind of evaluate that too. Um, so all, overall, I, great, I do have a question. Um, my understanding from my high schooler is that on some grades, there's a max grade on a retake. Is that accurate? The, the video talked about, like, you could, like, go up to a hundred percent. But my understanding is it's not like you could get an A minus and then redo it and get an A plus. Is that, is there like a limit on how high of a grade you could get?
I apologize. I think a lot of that depends on the course, the assignment, that type of thing. I know in the math department, i- in general, no, we don't cap things. But a lo, I know a lot of our teachers sit down and have conversations with students, especially, like, i- i- if you were at a ninety-one percent, this is not something you should be spending, you know, you need to be moving on. You have mastered that material. And that's part of learning too, is that this isn't about grade chasing. This isn't about, you know, I want the perfect. Um, so I, I, I would, I could see where there might be some situations where they would say, you know what? We're only going to do this much and get it up to this, to where you can. But as a general rule, no, we don't cap it. Um, what we have told students is that if you're in the A range, then no, this is not something you should be doing. There are better ways for you to be spending your time.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Um, and I think too, with my two students, um, I have one who, um, works extremely hard and everything is still a struggle and keeps retrying and redoing in life, just in general. And then I have another one who just like, I don't know, skims the textbook and gets a hundred percent. You know, it's very different learning, very different styles. Um, and so I think that that's also where I appreciated you guys acknowledging that, that there's different students, different types of styles. Um, so I really appreciate that too. So overall, thank you, um, for this. Thank you for listening to our questions, and obviously we have a lot and we have more to come. Um, thank you for answering questions for parents and continually, um, adapting also your education for our families. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the, the presentation. It, it's something that I've been interested in for some time. It actually goes back to when I was running for school board. I had a lot of questions come up to me or comments. And it's something I've been asking for, a presentation on this for some time. So I'm glad that we, we've, uh, have this tonight. Uh, some of my questions have been answered. I think, uh, Louise's got a lot of them there, or several of them. But, um, I, I too want to echo the, the need for, uh, measuring, uh, metric, the metrics as to, is it really improving? Or, or are we also getting some unintended consequences? And, uh, I haven't heard, uh, about that, but have you seen, where you've seen that there's been some things happen that you wish didn't happen or what were not intended? You know, ki- kids are smart. It's one thing, I've been around kids so, for so many decades, they tend to find out how to get around things and.
You know, I think there, there's no doubt, Greg, what you, you were talking about, and we've heard some of those things. Personally and talking to teachers, um, it goes back to kind of what Jacinda said earlier. The student that's asking for a retake at ninety, ninety-one percent, that's a whole different conversation. This is not about grade chasing. It goes back to the learning. So, you know, from that perspective, is there unintended consequence of that? Sure, there's been some of that. I can even say that even at the middle school, when I, when I spent time there. Again, the, the conversation to students about that, you know, is very different. And so for me, there is not any unintended, like, I, I have heard stories, you know, that, oh, this kid just turned in a test and said, I just want the retake. I, I've never confirmed that. And I've never heard that. You know, I've asked teachers that. And so, you know, those types of things are out there. Um, however, that, that's never been my experience in two different buildings. And, and so for me, um, the only unintended consequence that I have specifically seen is addressing the idea of grade chasing. With a student that has already mastered something, that, that is not the point. And again, we don't do things because we think they're going to be unintended consequences. When we do things, we have to be, you know, able to have those hard and difficult conversations and kind of share that, that, look, you're already in good shape, you're great. You've mastered this and you're ready for the next thing, uh, to move on in your learning journey.
Yeah, I've, I've heard of, an example of an unintended consequence is, you know, the kids that are, are not truly struggling because of, of whatever could be happening in their lives. And I, I think it's wonderful to be able to address that. You know, some kids have a different family situation, a home situation than others, and, and others don't, and that could be a real distraction. And, uh, it's hard for the kids to maybe focus, or they may not have, uh, the help at home to get them to help focus on things. But then there's the kids kind of in the middle, um, that, um, and I've heard this from talking to, you know, quite a number of people that, uh, if they figure out how to get the same grade with doing less work. And, uh, that's a concern. And that's a concern I have, is that, are we affecting, you know, work ethic and, and their personal best practices of maybe not needing to do their best the first time, but have figured out how to still get an A in the class with maybe less effort than it might have taken in previous times? So maybe you could talk to that.
Yeah, so let me, let me just first address it. So you have students that come into a class, and you have a wide variety of students that are all over the learning continuum. So you have a student that might be taking a class, and they already know the material. So they don't have to do a lot of work, they know the material, they get an A, they get an A, they get an A. You have another student that comes in and doesn't necessarily know the material, and they need to learn the material. So that student that started and they failed miserably, they, they worked at it, they built it, they did a little better, they continued to do a little better, and by the end, they were receiving an A. Which student learned more? Was it the student that already knew the material, or was it the student that didn't? I mean, I would say the student that didn't know the material, and throughout the semester or throughout the year, continued to improve their knowledge, their skills in that area, and by the end, they were mastering it. That's a student that has learned more. Now, who worked harder in that class? I would say the student that didn't know the material worked harder than the student that came in and already knew the material. And now, I'm not saying we have students that come in and already know the material on all of their courses and that stuff, but we do have students that come in at different levels, and so it's not about the effort that is, is happening comparing them to other students. Again, we bring back to, it's about the learning, it's about, we wanna make sure that all of our students are making progress towards and mastering those essential standards, K-12. And so we, and some students need different supports in there, and others don't need as many. And it's the same as you think about a student that has glasses. We would never say that, I can't have my glasses, because let me tell you, I won't be able to see a thing, and it will impact my learning, because not everybody has glasses in here. You give the students the supports that they need, so that they can learn, and it's not about the effort. And there is that narrative out there, that students are just going out partying the night before, and they're not studying for the test, because they know they can have a retake. But as Dr. Ferris says, there's rumors out there, but he's not confirmed that, that we're not seeing that that's happening in our classrooms, where students are just saying, you know what, I'll, I'll just pass this time and I'll, I'll study. Because again, it's not just take a retest, you have to relearn it, you have to work with the teacher, you have to work with maybe other peers or tutors, or you need to rework the assignments before you can, are allowed to even do a retest. So it's not just, eh, I don't feel like doing it today. But on the other hand, we also have students that do have bad days, adults have bad days, and that day, that time, they take that test, they might not do their best, and that's not really indicative of their, what they truly know and learn. And so having them do some reteaching, having them do some corrections, so that they can show their learning. And again, we bring it back to, it's about the learning. But in a district this size, with all of our teachers, we, we have to continue to work on the consistency, we have to continue to work on those pieces, so that, like, as Jacinda mentioned, in algebra, all students get the same rigorous curriculum, and all students have that, they're, they're graded in the same way, they have the same practices. So you have that guaranteed viable curriculum in algebra itself, but we wanna continue to work on getting that across all courses, to have those same practices. So it's not, where students are really looking at, it's about the learning, and it's not about playing the game of the grades that I receive, and I, I know I need to get so much for this teacher, and it looks different over here in this teacher. But that's an area that we'll continue to work on, but we're, starting somewhere, we've made great gains in, before, we had algebra teachers all doing it all very differently. And so having, you know, as Dr. Ferris put parameters and guidelines on it, starting at that point, and that's an area that we're at.
This question comes back to the metrics that we talked about earlier, that I had a friend of mine had mentioned that his, his eighth grade son is, gets a, he's a straight A student, but he has poor vocabulary, and does not test well in the NWA tests. So that would make me think, maybe we've got an instance of grade inflation there, and it, it seems like there might be some ways to look for those kinds of things, where, you know, we're, we're not, so I would just, I put that out as a challenge, you know, you know, this could be anecdotal kind of information, so I, I'm just trying to be constructive and suggesting that maybe we could find ways to look where that may be happening, and this, this might be one where you look at what they're doing poorly on some other assessment tests, but we're giving them some pretty good grades, that's, you know, doesn't, doesn't line up, so.
Right, and so there, there are a variety of data sources that you look at. But let, let me be clear, NWA is not a, an assessment that looks at what, their, their summative learning. NWA is a benchmark assessment that determines what is the student ready to learn next? What has the student learned so far, and what are they ready to learn next? So you may see a mismatch, you, you shouldn't see an exact correlation between grades. One assessment, when you do look at I-Learn and grades, you, you would assume that you would see, okay, if they have an A, then they're, they're passing. But as we continue to work with our grades, and one of the benchmarks we do look at, is what, what does that look like when you have a kid that surprises you? What, why? Why did they not do well? But again, it comes back to, it doesn't mean that we necessarily have a mismatch, but it gives us an indicator that we need to dig into the data. Because one reason could be that they rushed through the assessment, they didn't take it, and we had examples of parents doing, during public speaking, talking about the I-read assessment, where they did rush through it. It wasn't that they could not read, but it was because when they took the assessment the first time, they rushed through it, they didn't concentrate on the questions, and so it gives us an indicator to dig into it. And so you're, you're absolutely right, how do we look at all of the different data points to determine, and that, that's another way we can look at our grading practices, and do we have alignment? But you're never going to have a direct correlation between an I-Learn and a grade, and say, well, you have, these grades are all inflated because these are your I-Learn scores, but it gives you an indicator to dig in deeper, to see. In some cases, it is, I mean, as we look at our elementary, and the teachers are scoring the students based on where they're at, based on the standard. I-Learn is scoring the students on, based on where they're at with the standard, but again, I-Learn is one test, it does not test all of the standards, and it does not test the standard, it tests them on that one day. And so they're, they're different types of measures, you should see some continuity before it, but it's not gonna be a one-to-one exact match. But it does give us some data points to really look at, what does that data tell us, and how do we dig into it to get even better?
So roughly, how long have we had this in place, at the elementary and middle school levels?
Have what in place?
The, this non-zero grading and retake capability? I'm not sure what we call this whole thing, but...
Yeah, so at, at the elementary, it's not, it's not a non-zero grading, again, it's, they, they do the work. We're not averaging the grades together, they're looking at, where is the student based on the standard? We've had standards-based grading in place at the elementary for twenty-five years.
Okay, so, so the middle school...
It's grading for equity, just to be clear, is grading, is, are we calling it grading for equity? What do we call it? The fifty percent approach, what do we call it?
That, well, that is looking at ma- making sure the grades are mathematically accurate.
Right, I just thought there was a name for it. I think some people call it something, grading for equity, or whatever. That's only at the middle school level.
Okay.
And so I think he's just asking, how long have we had it?
Four, four or five years.
So, so have you been able to see any positive improvement at the high school level, then? Cuz I would assume these kids would have gone through the middle schools, and we'd see that, you know, now we're getting a broader base of learning?
Mr. Brown, I can share with you, I pulled some data here as you were talking and talking about measures, and Ms. Peel, every year, sends an email about AP testing to Dr. Bearsford, Mr. McMichael, myself, Dr. Ferris, Dr. Dudley, and I can share with you that this past year, we gave five hundred more AP exams to over two hundred new students taking those AP exams. So, and, and in addition to that, our pass rate of achieving a three or higher continues to rise and go up. This past year was ninety-one percent earning that three or higher. And so I'm very, very proud of that data point and that measure, and could we attribute that to, you know, kids not giving up and pushing kids who haven't been in AP classes anymore because of those grading practices? You know, perhaps. However, I am pleased with that data point, that shows that more kids are taking that AP test, and I'm very proud of Carmel High School and the work that they're doing to achieve that measure.
And, and just to reiterate what Dr. Ostrom was saying, it's, again, I wanted to say, it's not about the grade, it's about the learning. And as Rick warmly talked about, failure is actually, we want to have a failure, we're not saying we want students to fail, but we want them to be able to, you're gonna learn way more from failing and then learning how to fix that than you do by just going in, you already know the information. And so how are we making sure our students are, have that growth mindset, they're willing to take those chances, they're willing to really dig in and go to that higher level, and we can bring our students to that higher level? I was talking to a parent this afternoon, was talking about, her students took AP, IB classes, and when they started with that class at the beginning, they didn't do well. And the AP teacher and the IB teacher said, yes, that's okay, but I'm going to teach you how to do that, I'm going to teach you. So they did fail, and these are students that are not used to that failure. And so to talk about, you, you, you're constantly trying for that perfect, and you don't wanna take those chances and those risks. But we want our students to take those chances, take those risks, so they can go and learn deeper. And by the end, those students were very successful. As Dr. Ostrom said, you know, it, our, the one data point shows that we continue, year after year, giving more and more AP tests, and more students are taking them, more students are taking multiple tests, but our scores continue to go up as well.
And, and I would think that those are the same kind of skills, I know Jenny and I both run businesses, and we all have or ha- have had or have jobs that you use in the workplace, correct? You know, you don't just come to a job, as Jenny said, and, and you're fired because you haven't learned something the second day. It's a continuous process in, in any job, and I think that teaches our kids a really good skill of, you don't have to just come in and, and know it all, you're, you're there to learn, you're there to get better, and that, that continuous growth mindset, I think it's just a shift. I think a lot of us probably of my age and older grew up with, with what was a very fixed mindset world, you know, of the, the zero to one hundred grading scale was part of that, and we're relearning that, I at least am, and I think a lot of us of that, we're, we're trying to have that growth mindset and pass that on to our, to our kids, so they have that resilience, and I, I think, I appreciate that that's part of it. In the world, you don't make a mistake and just get fired, or, or get something taken away, you, you learn from that, and you get better at what you're doing.
Yeah, and I, I think it's great to give hope, you know, for kids that are, are struggling or whatever they're, for whatever reason, so I, you know, I'm just sharing some things I've heard. I have just one last question, and this has come up a number of times with various parents, parents that have particularly kids in the school, several kids over the years, and they're, they see differences in, in techniques, and that's, that's expected, you know, it's as we try new things and try to learn what works, and then what doesn't work, and make changes, so. But what I hear with some frequency is that we've, we don't do, we don't use rocket math techniques anymore and vocabulary lists, the parents, parents aren't seeing that come home, and there's concern with that. Could you talk to that as a, why we...
So why we don't do math fact testing at the elementary, is what you're referring to?
No, where you, you learn, like, what's, what is six times seven, and you just have it memorized. So if you're, if you're doing a...
We're still, I mean, my, my three kids have still done that.
We, we still do that.
Is that right?
Do we use rocket math and do a speed test every day? No. And the reason we don't is because the research will say, that is not how they build the fluency in math facts. And so as we continue to get better, as we, because in our district, we are a continuous improvement district, and we look at, what are those best practices, what does the research say, and what's working? And one of the things, when we did have rocket math, we found, we didn't see any increase in their multiplication tables, of knowing their multiplication tables. So instead, we look at, what does the research say in math, and how are we making sure they're, they're still learning those, we're still expecting them to know those, but they're not getting a timed test every day.
Okay, so, so we do use rocket math techniques?
No, we do not use rocket math techniques, because rocket math techniques were you, basically, what you were doing is you were assessing them every single day on a timed test without doing anything to intervene. So it'd be like, I'm trying to lose weight, and I weigh myself every single day, but I'm not doing anything different, and I'm not losing any weight, and I can't understand why. That was basically what rocket math was, it was just, you're not going to learn your math facts by just testing every single day.
It's my, all three of my kids have gotten things we could cut out, like flashcards almost, and things to practice at home with the same math facts, you know, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, but just more that part of the, actually teaching it, instead of just assessing it, would be the difference?
Correct, and you practice it through learning games, I mean, as we had everyday math, and now that we have Reveal, you practice it that way, and be, because you do definitely want, we're saying, we want our students still to have accuracy and fluency in the, those skills, but we're not using rocket math.
And with vocabulary lists, do we, is that something we've changed, or do we...
So again, the research would say, having a list of vocabulary words where you're just filling out the definitions, that would not be a way that you're going to deeply learn your vocabulary. Instead, you are, we are still teaching vocabulary, and the way you're teaching that, you're teaching that within context. So at the elementary school where we teach vocabulary, we have new vocabulary words in our, our units, and our students look at those words, they may be looking at, here's the word, they look at, what is the definition of the word, what is an antonym or a synonym for the word, how can you use that word in action? So we're still teaching vocabulary, but we're not doing it through, here's a list, look at them up in the dictionary and memorize them. Because what is very clear on that is that's not where you're going to get that deep learning, where the students understand and are able to use those vocabulary words within context. And we want the students not to have that, just the surface learning of this memorization, that as soon as the vocabulary test is over, they forget it, but we want them to be able to know those words and use them in their learning and in their continuing future learning.
So, so Greg, I would tell you this, so as we get these, these questions from the community, cuz it's good to have context with those in the community that have kids in the school, and they're asking about, you know, how do they, how does my student learn how to do reading, writing, like I used to, kinda thing, right? So I would say, ask them, to talk to their teacher about the competency that comes from rocket math, or the competency that comes from the vocabulary list, to see what the new approach is, to ensure that their student learns that. Cuz I'm thinking about, like, Caesar's English, I don't even know if we do anymore, that mug, no joke, but I do remember that there were, that was terminology, like definitions, like what you're talking about, definitions for words, but it also broke down pieces of words, and then it also talked about the definition of the type of words, kinda thing. So it actually is more complex and more comprehensive, the approach that they take for that. So I would just say, you know, make sure that that parent is understanding the learning that comes from those types of approaches, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
And now...
Of course, yeah, the, some examples I've had is that they do that, they talk to the teachers, and they say, you know, with the example of rocket math, and, and they've been told that they can't use rocket math anymore, they can't be teaching that, so I'm trying to make that connection of...
It doesn't sound like rocket math was teaching, anyway, I think it was just a...
And rocket math was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't, it was probably at least five, six years ago.
I would have to say that, I agree, talking to the teachers is always a good idea, but I do know that when I, I attend, I don't, the high school has them online that you, that you watch, but I, I go in person to the elementary and the middle school, you know, meet the teacher and the parent nights, and it's really helped me understand the curriculum, because they go through in detail all of the different programs in elementary, and then in middle school, what they're teaching, the different units, every single book that was going to be read all year, and then we had access to those slides that were sent by the, the team lead. And so that was really nice for me to gain an understanding. I think that's a really good thing, is making sure parents are active in that, because that, all that information, I've kept it all in my email for each of my kids, so I can refer back, you know, why are they doing this? Oh, that's because this is that part of the curriculum.
Yeah, and these, these are parents that I'm talking about are very involved in their kids' education and keep an eye on things, so, but, okay, thank you.
I won't add much more since you guys have been here, thank you so much. I have a second grader, eighth grader, and sophomore, that took me a second, so I, this was helpful just to understand a little bit more, but I've lived the, the standards base for elementary, and I really love it. That might be... That might be more of my perspective too as a speech therapist. And I, because that's the model that most therapy type people use is I'm not just going to test a kid and say they can't do it and say, oh, well, they can't do it. I'm, that's what I work on, right? I'm working towards that goal. And so I think it's the same model I see. Well, you know, if I retest them again in six months, oh, we're really close. We're not at proficiency, but we're approaching proficiency. And that's an easy terminology for us parents to see. So I, I, I really like that change versus like, what is an A for a first grader? You know, I don't, I don't know. What is that? I just think it, to me, it's been really helpful. So.
And before that, we had a five. What does a five mean?
Yeah, yeah.
We added the description so that it's very clear.
Especially with the standards as well, yes.
Well, thank you. And I want to thank all of our people that presented tonight. We appreciate the time that you guys spent coming out. Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have Dr. Bearsford with his report.
Well, I, I think it'd be appropriate to release the hounds. And if you guys want to roll on out, it won't hurt my feelings. And I will send you my report and the email.
Can I go too?
You can read it. No, you may not. Stirring it up. While those guys are walking out, I want to make sure everybody knew that tonight, I am representing the Comets of Clay Center Elementary School. I have the mug. I have the super cool Clay Center staff T-shirt. I've got a koozie. I'll put that up there too. And she even sent a clipboard. It's got, you know, the Comet right on there. So a super cool logo. And so anyhow, I'm celebrating the Comets of Clay Center Elementary, including their talented administrators. That'd be Principal Rhonda Turner and Assistant Principal Kelly Flagger. And I appreciate their outstanding leadership. Also a shout out to the amazing staff, parents and the super cool students. So everybody that's left here, I would like you to join me in three claps and a wish for Clay Center Comets. Be a hard solid on that for a small number. That was great. Just a couple of things that were pretty, pretty fun this week. One was the Carry On Award. And what that was, it was a, well, I guess we'll just throw out some congratulations to Amazing Kate Masterson, who serves as our Assistant Director of Digital Security and Privacy. And she won the Carry On Award at the Hoosier Educational Computer Coordinator State Conference. And so what this award recognizes is that's for those who have provided excellent service, support and selfish contribution to their peers. So congrats to Amazing Kate. She exemplifies these qualities at the highest level. And Kate's presented to us a few times here in the, in the PMR. And she's just a great professional. And to clue you in on a little bit of what we call a double savatouji was, Kate was not going to attend that conference. And so some of the tech department told a little fib and said that one of the other people was getting the award and could you organize to get everybody there? And so she came to do that. And actually, when they called her name, she was videotaping the person she thought was getting the award. That was kind of a trick to make sure she was there to receive it. It was a really, really good day. Also, another person from our tech department, Becky Barker, has been named the 2024 Spirit of Special Olympics Volunteer of the Year for the state. And it's for demonstrating outstanding support and dedication during the course of the past years. The Spirit of Special Olympics award is the highest honor that they bestow to individuals and families that exemplify the service and dedication it takes to bring athletic, academic, social leadership and health opportunities to our 19,000 athletes across the state. So if you know Becky, she brings the juice. She is a positive energy bus. And, and she just did a fantastic job. So real proud of Becky and it's, it's an award well earned. Wanted to report on the Marching Greyhounds. They're the ISSMA 2020-24 class, open class A. So it's the highest class runner-up. So I was able to attend on Saturday night and saw their performance in the final. And it was just flat out amazing. The sound, musical quality, the, the whole show is centered around arcs. And so there's all kinds of different movements. And it, it was just the most fascinating thing to watch. And it was also the fastest band performance on turf. Those kids were flying all over that field. I've never seen it go that fast. And I still don't see how they can breathe to play their instruments when they're moving that fast for, for all that time. Very proud of the musicians, directors, coaches, parent volunteers, really just so many who work so hard from packing up and unloading the last truck, marching greyhounds. They kind of exemplify that together we achieve moniker at a really high level because it really is a huge community and they all have to play a special part to make it all happen. And it's just, just amazing. Final competition is this Saturday and that will be in the Bands of America National Marching Band Competition. And so I'm looking for an upset and see what happens. So go hounds and congratulations to the marching greyhounds. Wanted to do a little shout out to really Emily and, and Mr. Dr. Ferris there. I gave a little commercial last time that we were going to have a open house at Carmel High School. And it kicked off with alumni picture of staff members who graduated from Carmel High School to kick off the event. Don't mean to steal too much thunder, but over 200 of our employees graduated from Carmel High School. And so it's pretty amazing. So then right after that, people just started pouring in the building from all directions. We had Carmel High School students, department chairs, teachers set up all over the building to share information about like the different career pathways, all the different academic programs, extracurricular programs, easily over 1,000 people in that building on Sunday. So it was pretty special. And so kudos to Emily and Dr. Ferris and really all the team that made that happen. It was really, really good. So I have a double bell ringer for tonight. Okay? So, so it's, yeah, drumroll's good. So my bell ringer, of course, is going out to the 2024 Girls State Cross Country Team, the Carmel Greyhounds, because they won the state meet. So how about those greyhounds? They were, the girls have been dominated, really dominant the whole year. And they won the state meet pretty handily. And it wasn't a perfect race, but they're so deep and so strong. They really took care of it. Three girls were all state. Congratulations Coach, Head Coach Scott Williams. This is his first year. So I told him that will do, you know, for your first year. His assistants, the parents, all the support people, of course, the athletes. I always say that to do your best when it counts the most, you know, and the pressure, under the pressure of a state final, in this case, race, is really about the, the highest level you can, you can reach in athletics, you know, as an athlete. So well done. And I also want to do a little shout out to the, the boys team. They had a really, really tough day. And so here's Carmel stuff, really, really tough day. They got eighth in the state. And so they did a fine job in, under a little bit of duress there. So, so looking, and a lot of underclassmen on the course. So I think looking good for great things in the future for Carmel High School cross country. The greatest spectacle in racing. And finally, my, second of my double bell ringer is Veterans Day. And I appreciate starting the meeting with, you know, you know, giving some attention to our veterans here at the meeting. But Dr. O and I attended the City of Carmel's Veterans Program on Friday. And today I attended Woodbrook's Elementary Veterans Day Program. And there's nothing more touching than elementary fourth grade students singing patriotic songs and at the top of their lungs and then hearing the thundering applause when the different branches of the military are announced and they stand up and often salute. And when our veterans that are active duty soldiers stand. So I got to experience that at Woodbrook. At the city's Veterans Day Ceremony, Carmel Middle School Choir sang some patriotic songs. And they sang the Armed Forces medley, which again is my favorite part of the, of the program. So when they sing the different songs of the different branches of the military, the soldiers stand up and most of the time they're at attention and saluting. And then the crowd goes wild. And then they sing the next one, you know, Anchors Away and all the Navy guys stand up. And it's just real, real touching. And a lot of these guys are, you know, pretty elderly and they still have their uniforms. They still have their hats and they show up and show out on that day. And it's pretty special. And it's so important to our students to see that. We had two of our elementary students, they were sisters, that came out and led the pledge to the flag. Just adorable. We had six elementary students win the poster contest for K through fifth grade. Dr. O assisted at that time by talking to every one of the poster winners, introducing them and then asking them questions about, about their drawing. My favorite one was, he said, tell me a little bit about your drawing. And he said, well, I drew it with pencil on paper. And Dr. O was very quickly said, well, what, what does it say on your poster? And then the students started talking about, he wanted both the, the veterans to feel special. And he also wanted other people to realize how special the veterans are. And so a great job with the, the emcee and with, with the kids. The kindergartner will probably be the mayor someday. He, he said, I'm, I wrote, I did this for my grandfather and gave him his name and what branch of the service he was in. And I was like, that kid's going to be the mayor someday. So very, very sweet. We also had three middle school students, one from each of our middle schools, in grade six, seven and eight, that won the essay contest. And boy, when they read their essays, the whole place was dead quiet. And you could see people just, just almost getting a little bit emotional because of what, the way, the messages that those kids wrote. So all three of those were middle schoolers from, from our schools as well. So then Sergeant Govan was one of the feature speakers. And he's a sergeant in our SRO group and he's also a, in the Air Force. And he gave a really good talk, especially highlighting that there's a sacrifice to going overseas and serving your country. But another part of the sacrifice is you're not at home for special events. He talked about Christmas and, you know, having, doing FaceTime to see his kids open their Christmas presents. And probably the most, most difficult story told was when his daughter asked him if he was going to be home for a birthday. And he had to say, no, I'm not, because he's serving way, way far away. And then finally, the chaplain of the Carmel VFW post, Rock Ephron. So I mean, he's got a hero name, Rock Ephron. And Rock's been in.